Uh, we call it a work session with order. As a general announcement, everything said in this meeting will be reported and as part of the record, there's no cause for a public hearing or hold any discussion I'm aware of. Okay? Uh, first order of business is to open bids. This is for demolition projects.
There are four, four structures.
Okay. This is CDDG and Act 13.
And Act 13.
This is part of the effort to be more aggressive on the demolition. Okay, have you taken these into the duly? So then, eighty-five hundred for Clarendon property.
Oh, so just as a preface, I split them up because of some of the with CDDG funds, some of them are going to do with Act 13, so.
So are we going by the total amount of the grand total of the project, or are we gonna go by?
I would say by the grand total of the project, because we're gonna have one company who all.
Well, then this is Fox and Sons for grand total of thirty-five thousand five hundred.
That's a big group bid then.
Thirty-eight five hundred?
Yeah, thirty-five.
Who is this one?
No, no, thirty-five.
Total for all four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is from Western City Company?
Yes.
Oh, Keith White, PBA. Right, there you go. And that is forty-four thousand nine hundred.
And there's the other two that are used.
Oh, okay, very good. Looks like they have the, well, you have a name and order. So, you worry about being able to use these?
Yes.
That doesn't look over what we expected.
For the total, yeah, because, um.
Got a lot of other eyes. I mean, Clarendon must be close enough.
Yeah.
But to get down to the U and Sheffield.
Well, I think that's why the Clarendon Sheffield properties are all less likely to be one just because it's two ones out of their way.
Still looks good.
The thirty-five-five, like honestly, um, that's, that's really good, because we've been trying to get these overall prices down and, um, and generally, I would say that this is, this is definitely always the cost overall.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, next we have a guest with us, Sarah Flascher, to talk about the Willster Heroes program and to introduce her and to turn over to Ed for us.
Okay, well, I took the opportunity of letting her speak today. Uh, Sarah approached me about doing a program called Willster Heroes, uh, where wills can be prepared for three for not only veterans, but our first responders who are the, who are the county. And I thought it was a, a great opportunity. I did talk to Bill Gallagher from IT about the possibility of sending her up here to Monticamp and Trump. He said, uh, there would be no problem setting her up with, uh, a laptop so that she'd be able to use our system to do this. But I want to run through the board before I announce anything in the paper. I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Essentially, as Ed said, um, I've been trying to kick this program on for quite some time and I've been trained by Pennsylvania Bar Association and then working in conjunction with our Warren County Bar Association, we've been trying to, you know, get an interest in this. And I have had a lot of the full time getting people to sign up for the actual program. So, I met with Ed and, you know, he made some suggestions, uh, that might be a little more appeasing to the community. Historically, I was trying to start up with a, um, VFW type facility. And Ed was suggesting that maybe we want to do something a little more private. Uh, definitely you can get accessible, smoke-free, non-alcohol type environment. And start small is my goal, start small initially and get a few people interested. And then, once we see this program take off, it's gonna get much bigger. Um, I have some colleagues at the Bar Association that, um, can render some assistance once we get moving in the right direction, but at this time, I'm the only one, I believe, trained by the Pennsylvania Bar Association, use their documents. So, um, we would try to true-ize people once, you know, get an idea how many people, um, can do this. They do have to sign up on the internet, but Ed and I are trying to look out the logistics on if someone doesn't have one or is a little bit computer challenged that we can maybe utilize, you know, his office to help people get themselves signed up.
Okay.
So, we're thinking of, um, doing the wills on Wednesday or maybe twice a week. We were thinking, you know, initially, um, four to five appointments a day and see how it goes.
Okay.
And then if it is successful, at some point, I'll try to arrange out and do weekend evening hours at another location because the courthouse won't be open. Essentially, what we want to do.
Who, who, who funds this program?
Um, it's strictly volunteers. Um, so, uh, and then, you know, people can make donations if they want to. I received a small donation from Clarendon, that's probably to allow me to purchase paper and toner. And then, you know, I've got my own printer, but essentially, the attorneys provide their time for free. And, uh, you know, if we can find some notaries that have an interest, I have one girl who came forward and said she didn't have no real savings, but, you know, essentially, the lawyers volunteer their time for free.
We, we have several, uh, folks that can do that, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we have, we have several people that are, that have notary losses.
You know, if we get a lot of interest and have the ability to have, you know, more space for setting up, I'm sure some, you know, some training lawyers would come that can use the program from other counties they volunteered, but, you know, just got to pick off a date. But I think, you know, the annuals even said they need to come help, you know, to over, like to review the documents with people before they sign them to make sure they're accurate.
Yeah, I looked at, I looked at the program this morning, the left side and everything. I mean, you have to, if you're interested in helping, you have to sign up as an attorney and, you know, the PBA has some, um, some links to, to some helpful information. Basically, it looks like there's just a form that Lexus Nexus basically has a, has a template that you fill out.
Yes.
So, essentially, I think the, the, uh, for the veteran or the first responders given a questionnaire.
There's a template there.
Right.
And it's, so it's contacted ahead of time, given a questionnaire, which is standard practice for asking, you know, what do you want your estate planning documents to say? And then, you actually have the meeting where the form is filled out, right?
They fill the form out and we're getting.
Right, they fill out the questionnaire out, but then you sit down with them and fill out the online, the online form.
Yes, when they're sitting there. And then, we don't save any of the documents, like we print them and send them on their way because the goal is to provide them with estate planning, you know, for the self in their future and the attorney's relationship ceases at the point that they walk out the door. It's truly a volunteer program, you know, we're not looking to find clients, we're looking to, you know, give back to the community for them getting, you know, putting their life on the line for us, you know, veterans and first responders.
Should be pleasing to my question, which is, you seem motivated, I'm sure there's a story behind why you decided to pick up this charge.
You know, I relocated from Pittsburgh and I spent, I don't know, probably fifteen years down there as an attorney and I was really heavily involved in the pro bono activities down there. And we really don't have a really developed pro bono network here in Warren County. And so, it's just, you know, I think it, you know, Nathaniel would probably say the same thing. You know, there's a percentage of us attorneys that feel pretty proud of our profession and, you know, we want to be able to give back to those people that put their life on the line. I mean, you know, especially in Warren County, there's so much volunteer fire fighting and, you know, the volunteer fire police and we have a lot of veterans and there's just not a lot of supports, you know, in the smaller counties that you find in some of the larger counties, you know, so that's, it's my way of giving back. I mean, I feel pretty good about my profession and my ability to, you know, have the education and the ability to actually do this, so.
Good, well, thank you so much for, um, bringing your time after we do this and we're getting it. Uh, from the, from my perspective, we need an accounting resources, you know, access to.
Congressman, I just wanted to bring that from the board before we went any further, I've already.
In front of the.
Yeah, I can pretty much go it all through.
Yeah.
What is, what are your channels for filtering people into the program?
Well, the first thing we've got to do is get the, the program, like, get it advertised so that we can start getting people to call in saying that they would like to sign up for the program. Uh, we use my office for that.
If you guys put a flyer together or something, I want to help with that, and, um, we can post that on the Facebook page and kind of put it on the county website and stuff like that.
Prepare to hire that's already, you know, we, they have a kind of, but they're not using, but, um, uh, I've done it, it's the recipe, but I just have never been able to get that link between the flyer and somebody actually signing up on the way to come. So, we're hoping that if people are a little nervous, they can call Ed's office and that would be the piece and also the advertising in the paper so that people realize it's, you know, those are in that program.
Yeah, it'd be good to, um, do some kind of marketing on it to just understand the demographics and kind of speak to it. Because my assumption is, is you're looking for people who maybe, you know, don't have the resources to hire a lawyer or, or, you know, kind of either economically challenged or, um, you know, maybe they're disabled and maybe they aren't as mobile or, you know, those types of situations. So try to, and then convince them that they're gonna get legitimate legal help and that this is something that they should do. Because that's the other barrier, because a lot of people don't understand how a will works or how, you know, living will works or any of that other kind of stuff.
Well, I read through the, uh, all the documents that I can find on this and thank you for some of the sites you told me to look at. Uh, one of the guidelines is they have to make less than seven hundred and fifty thousand of it. So, that's gonna be. I don't know if any of our volunteers have made over seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep, that's the only exclusion, but I feel pretty confident that some of the people probably already have a will.
Have you gotten a sense of how, what the interest level is?
We haven't even advertised it yet, so. Uh, most veterans are, before they go to a war zone, are required to do a will. So that they have a will on file before they go to war.
How long? Okay, did that start?
Oh, that's.
Wait, forever?
Now, I joined the service at seventy-four and every time we deployed, we were required to do a new will.
To do a new one?
Exactly, pretty much when you touch back.
Because we, we didn't know if we were coming back.
I have, I have, I have a memory of reading about that.
I think what I was reading is Willster Heroes was started in the, after my, like, uh, eleven. So they wanted to create a venue for first responders.
Yeah, so, so is this not just veterans, it's also?
First responders, veterans. Um, so, I think there's the probability of a large influx of people. Uh, like you were saying, there are a lot of people don't have a will because they can't, they don't think they can afford to go to an attorney to have a will prepared.
Yeah.
Uh, in the state of Pennsylvania, I'm not sure that a will is required for everything.
Yeah.
But.
Well, I think the big thing is, is everybody thinks they're gonna live forever. And while I'll get to it eventually, I don't think that they realize like how vulnerable they, they become by not taking that.
Right, I think the key points are if you're young and young, what happens to your children if something happens to you? Because we can set the guardianship up in the will. And the first responders, I mean, they're out there doing their job responding and they always put themselves last. And, you know, clearly, you know, money is, you know, always an issue and, you know. And the other documents, you know, the power of attorney documents come with this. So, if they want power of attorney for finances or healthcare, they, they come with it as well as a living will so that people know what they want. So, it's a nice estate planning package.
That's great. And this is the only question I would have, and this would go to both of you two, is would there be any liability for the county doing those on county property?
No, no, no liability, it's one, it, no more liability than the public walking in to use any other brand. You know, they're just, it's, it's public, I mean, they're unfair and. I have malpractice interns to cover me, but the Bar Association covers us, you know, with malpractice interns just for this program.
Okay, good. Well, yeah, from my perspective, when we use county employees or notoriety, when you want to use conference room follow-up, whatever. Or the paper, whatever, the board.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention and we definitely support it across the board.
So, when we get ready to talk to the gentleman from the paper, then you guys are comfortable with us saying that the commissioners, you know, support the program?
I think the paper knows.
So, remind us.
We've already had with Brian, uh, and he's got a full story for it.
Great, alright.
So.
Chuck is like, man.
I don't know if he knows about it or not.
But because I'm supposed to send him some of the envelopes, you know, that he can take pictures of. And then, you know, hopefully, hopefully with that, you know, this will really pull the program together.
Okay, and the other thing I'd like to do is, could you draft up a letter? Um, we could send it out, our letter had to Avery Emergency Department.
Yes.
So we.
What it is and what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we send letters every six months or so, they'll ever update, so it would just make sense to send something.
Yeah, I'll drop you something and who do you want me to give it to?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wrap up something and, um, you want it to be from the.
Just describe.
So, I'll just give you a little paragraph like this.
We can, we can customize it.
Okay.
You're saying, give, you know, just give us the details, the when and why, you know, we'll send out a letter to all the departments. And then, they always have monthly meetings, so we'll be able to do the program.
Yeah, copy me on it.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know, and then, um.
And may as well, because I'll send it out to all the veterans organizations.
So, between that, you'll get all police, fire, EMS agencies in the county, all the veterans organizations.
Hopefully we get some interest from that, right?
Yeah. Very good. Thank you so much for, uh, your hard work and thanks for coming in today.
Hey, thank you guys. Thank you, happy talking, I'm seeing you.
Bless her.
Yep, I'll see you guys later. Thanks again.
So, quarterly objectives, um, at this point, budget season, honestly, you may strike that for the end of the year, the budget season takes place. Why, at least, well, it's gonna take a while on that.
Care about that, I guess.
Yes. Um, so, on to the projects, the bicentennial. Um, why don't we update everybody on where we're at? So, we have a band coming, I hope you don't mind, they needed a hundred bucks for transportation and went and set up all the comforts around.
Uh, the only one that, uh, band that is coming is Jansville.
Right.
Uh, we have the barber shoppers coming, Youth Connection. We've never, they've never got, given us a definite, so we're gonna go with, um, barber shoppers at the beginning and the end.
Okay.
Um, we have some of the former commissioners and judges coming.
Good, and I want to give them a pen, but, um.
Oh.
So, I'll write some last of pen.
Okay.
That worked out.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, because we're gonna have this weekend next to get them.
Oh, I'll go look at it today, because I, I've done those for like a while, so they take like a week to print them.
Yeah, and they already have the pens here, I think ones that they already have, so it'll be as easy as you just send them.
Okay.
The line.
Yeah, because they just print it and then they put it in.
Yeah, but they should be, we're, we're not at crunch time yet, but.
Oh.
We should.
A B eating is doing our time capsule, they are donating it.
Where is we leaving the discussion on what we're putting in the time capsule?
Well, I know that both, uh, Judge Hammond and Judge Gerda are both doing letters to stick in there. Uh, the paper's going to provide a newspaper for October fifth. Other than that, we don't have anything to put in there.
Okay.
We should put like a, um, like a cell phone or something. What kind of technology should go in there? I have an old cell phone that I don't use, of course, like, I'm trying to think what's on it. I'm like, fortunately, by the time I look at it, hopefully I'll be dead at that time.
When is the time capsule scheduled to be opened?
Generally, it's gotta be at least twenty or thirty years, at least.
I think probably fifty.
Fifty years, fifty probably, to the two hundred.
Isn't there one in the front of the building?
There is one in front of the building where the year is in that stone.
Oh, okay.
It's tucked in there.
Yeah.
But that is for the country's centennial.
Yeah.
This is for the counties.
Yeah.
And we're gonna put it in the ground right underneath there.
Oh, okay, good. So, yeah, we can give them other things, I mean, since we just did the slate roof, maybe something related to the slate roof. We will have T D's slate, uh, radio project, we could throw in something, you know, radio system that behind.
I'm trying to think.
So remember, this is not the county, it's the county government's bicentennial, basically.
Yeah.
Uh, so, you know.
Just completely, you know, we can say that we can toss an extra election machine. There you go. Whoever's on the, I don't know if you've.
Yeah.
But in all seriousness, something related to the election system, we could, you know.
Appcity ballot or something.
Something, yeah. Really, just in thinking the big things that have happened in the last couple of years. Really do the county government, those are all, those are all good things. We could get like a little minitor or something from the old radio system. He says slate or something related to the roof repairs. I like the idea of an election thing. Is it, uh, is it just county government, is it, uh? Well, we're also somewhat celebrating all the other municipalities in the county. This is, when the county and counties were formed, there were only two municipalities.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so everything else has come out since then, so we're also somewhat celebrating. We are highlighting the, uh, they have a mayor.
Expansion, yes.
The mayor is gonna be given the history of the municipalities and how they developed, what, you know, spun off of what.
Judge Gerd will be speaking on the history of the courts.
Right, and I'll be speaking somewhat to the history of the commissioners.
Right. This is not like, this is that Saturday the fifth?
Yes, Saturday the fifth.
What, at the end?
Starts at eleven.
Right, but noon is when we start calling.
Yes.
Representative Brown coming?
I have not heard.
Yeah, I assume so. Congressman Thompson's coming.
Yes.
Um, Senator Hutchinson's gonna, again, I assume is coming.
I have not heard.
I followed, when was the last time you talked?
We sent letters out and they had until the twenty-seventh to.
I had a call, I followed, they called.
So they still have till Friday? Might be good to get an answer shared.
Yeah, I just followed, because they're, they're back in session, right?
They are.
They're gonna be running around and stuff, but you could draw. Understandable.
Josh, that was something that you had, uh, was it legislation that we're gonna read?
Right, the original. The main paragraph is what I said to you in that draft.
Okay, which I believe I forwarded to you.
No.
Didn't we?
No, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. He pulled the facts together for the bicentennial, like the proclamation managers, and, um, that, and that's where the paragraph was?
Put it in there.
Okay, so that was from the original legislation that formed the county.
Does that exclude like the needs and bounds, um, of, of the county alone?
Hmm, that had been established.
Yeah, prior legislation.
Fifteen years before.
As the, as the boundaries of the townships of Conalongo and Brogdon Strong.
Those would be part of the legislation of Benango County.
Well, when they created Benango County, they created five counties in the corner of the state and laid out the boundaries.
Right.
And we're gonna put that paragraph in the proclamation? Okay, so I need.
I was just curious, it reminds me, wasn't the history channel used to have that, um, specials, like how the, how the lines were drawn?
There, there aren't boundary lines in that.
Yeah.
Because all that did was let us have our own court, basically.
It's, oh, I see.
I think the county was derived from Malagandi and Lockomi County?
Yeah, those, these, the northwestern county.
There was like a couple of decades where it got chopped up different ways.
Okay, uh, anything else, have any, anything else we need to do where we need to do bicentennial?
Nope, I just need to know who the speakers are and where we're gonna fall to make the.
Right, the people, isn't it?
Yeah.
How, what are we doing to promote the thing?
Not as much as we should.
Well, I know that we have, the proclamation will be in the meeting packet by Wednesday, so that we.
We should work on even a rough, um, flyer and like some advertising stuff, I can work with Pam on that. So that we can, and then maybe we do an ad, because I've already had people asking me about the thing. And when is it, when, you know, like really honestly with the amount of time we have left, we should just start calling everybody now. Because it's, because we basically have a rough agenda already, we have enough to promote, yeah, so.
I'm gonna do some kind of story that runs on the first, and I thought a promo for this Saturday could be a side of the night, so.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
We need to get a Facebook event on there.
We can, uh, huge this afternoon, yeah. And I, I think what I'll do is try to put some graphics, I'm gonna do like a Facebook promotion so that people share it. That's a good way to get them, just to wear it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Because we're, we're gonna be, to some degree, we're gonna be piggybacking with, uh, with the lizard thing.
Yes.
So.
They can do, they only make more.
Yes, they would, can do.
They've got some county event to go on, on October fifth.
Excuse me, Dan?
I think so.
Is that?
So, I saw their games.
Oh, and their soccer games too, right? So they're, they're, they're having, they're opening in Navama for like tours or something, is that?
I think so, yeah.
I, I vaguely remember seeing, I didn't remember all the dates, though.
And there'll be food truck, there'll be, um, I believe, the ice cream truck.
Oh, there's gonna be an ice cream truck?
Where people are, um, welcome to bring their blankets.
I counsel all my plans.
Here, there'll be a food truck here. How long are things going on?
Probably what we figure, one thirty, two o'clock?
Uh, yes.
It's twelve, but it leaves.
We may, I may get to go here the last hour.
Yeah, or we're encouraging people that, you know, there is going to be the food truck here and there's going to be the ice cream truck, but they are more than welcome to bring a blanket and picnic ones along.
Well, you send out flyers to soccer games, there's ice cream here, you know, a lot of kids.
I think so.
Well, all morning, I mean, the games finish around ten o'clock and, you know, eleven, eleven-thirty and one o'clock, generally speaking.
The Historical Society will also be open at.
Oh, very good.
And that's just gonna be free ice cream?
No.
Absolutely, let's talk brass tax here. One of my favorite ice cream.
Yeah, I just want to.
I don't know what else is going on.
You come here for this and you play, I gave you a free sandwich and.
I, you, so you're asking for someone else, right? But this is in front of mine, I'm gonna put bitches though.
I know I do love to eat.
I do, I don't have to be someone.
All right, well, there's nothing else, since we love the agenda for the last day meeting?
Uh, well, I just wanted to, you know, first actually done the sidewalk project.
Oh, yeah.
So, we had Hugh Bird come at the end of last week and sat with Matt and Bob from Swanson and Sons uh, to discuss the whole situation of coordinating with them, because there's some stuff that's come up as a result of the sidewalk project that's gonna affect the pavement, pavement project. So, uh, so there, we've kind of all come to the conclusion that there's no way that we're gonna pave this thing at the end of this year. Um, and, uh, you, you know, Swanson and Sons is doing a really fantastic job on the sidewalk and, and we've had the benefit of really nice weather and it looks like the weather's gonna continue a whole length of days. and it looks like the weather's gonna continue a whole like a day as an exception, so I think they're gonna tear through that whole job pretty quick. But in order to set the whole thing, they have to cut out pavement a few feet around the entire thing and then grout it. And in order to redo the, um, in order to redo the lot or to do even the stuff that we were talking about, they would have had to basically mill off the top of everything and then kind of, kind of rebuild it, reset it. And so we have this, actually now that I think about it, oh, okay, I forgot to read that. Anyway, um, so because of that, originally we were gonna just patch essentially different parts of the parking lot and do it in sections and try to take care of the worst areas and, and basically because of the way the sidewalk's being built, we're gonna have to redo the entire lot start to finish, which I think everybody kind of uh, felt like all things considered that was the best way to go. So uh, Huber is putting together a change order for the project and then it's gonna be the first thing we're gonna do in the spring next year. Um, and, and so Huber Blackhouse is gonna put that in their queue. And basically what's gonna happen is, is the change order is gonna involve the edges of the parking lot, um, in order to incorporate that into what's being done overall. Okay, so we'll present that to the board at a, at a work session and then it'll be adopted in a, in a regular ceremony, yeah.
And Swanson and Sons is doing a uh, credit change order to remove the paving, which is about ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're just essentially sort of shifting one cost from one job to the other.
Yeah.
Are they going to make a thing with the major potholes in the parking lot before winter or?
Matt's probably gonna get some done until eight.
Yeah, until eight.
Actually, like you guys last year.
That's what it's called.
Okay, uh, and then next work session is the one where.
Yeah, so we're gonna do a press release today, I would think, um, along with, we're gonna have a litany of them over the next three or two. But uh, next work session, we're having um, Durbusley come here and do a presentation on the entire job that was done on the roof and to go through before and after pictures, to explain everything that was done in detail, answer any questions that anybody has about the work that was done. And then in the evening at five o'clock, was it Pam?
Yes.
They're gonna do, she's, Julie's gonna stick around and do a walk around the courthouse to point out all the different work that was done so that everybody can walk with her, ask questions about the work that was done, take a look at it, um, that kind of thing. And um, I think that's a really good close to project, which is, um, you know, come in on your budget, on time and uh, has, and everybody's been thoroughly pleased with it, so. Oh, and at, at the same time, just as a note, um, as I said, we're gonna be having, we're gonna walk thorough all over some of the areas that are gonna need to be fixed from the left, so that'll be, so that we'll be kind of going over that too.
Okay. Good. Any else related to the facilities, any other uh, projects?
We're, yeah, it will be, uh, so, uh, I don't know, th- there's a, there's a funny metaphor for me in this, um, but it's actually not a good, good thing. Basically, the flooding in Texas has decimated multiple factories that produce HVAC equipment in the United States.
Okay.
As a result, the order for the HVAC systems that were to go on roof of the jail and courthouse are delayed.
Okay.
So we're not gonna get them in until it looks like mid-November and that's when they're gonna be installed. So there's nothing they can do about it. Basically, the, the story that we got from APM is that every single organization in the United States is trying to get HVAC equipment as an capability, because at least from the couple of companies that they're working with, they, and they're trying to scramble to build the factories, um, and uh, get the stuff up. But we have, they, they said that they have a firm date in November to get them delivered and installed, so.
Okay, very good. So on to the Wednesday meeting, we have several proclamation. The coordinates would be DHS, the resolution for the EMS task force and subsequent appointments, and the Little League agreement.
So the Little League agreement is, but we're gonna have to table that, or I'd even say that we pull it off the agenda cause I think that there's still some things that we have to discuss related to that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I think we got another couple of weeks of, of work to do. For Fire Prevention Week, can we, you're more into what's the volunteer fire partners, can we get some people here to, to offer that to them and have them speak to them?
On the vice chiefs.
Yeah, that would be good. Um, also, I'm not sure if the chief wants to say more on this, but. Oh, that would be good, that would be good.
The National Disability Employment, where is Dr. Parton going on vacation, but please try to make sure that somebody from his staff and maybe a couple of the workers.
Great, great. National Bullying Prevention, I don't know, I'm just, I don't know if we should.
Maybe Stewart is going to try to make sure that somebody from the school district is there.
Awesome, that would be good to have Dr. Hollery, somebody down. Wish there, wish there was a little bit of kids down to the.
Okay, is there any disability in that? Somebody from St. Joe's on the bullying thing?
Yeah, I think anybody that, that's interested in this, it would just be nice to have some other people there, cause I think that's. Do you know anybody?
I can, I can mention something.
That would be great.
Okay. The last thing I want to add to it would be under correspondence, we need to get the letter of support together for an RCAT application that we're seeking out. Would be kind of standard, we've done before.
And that's R C E?
It's actually R A C E, I know, I don't know why they say R C E, you know, it's for AP. All right, there's nothing else? Um, any schedule wise? For myself, I'm leaving this afternoon to get out of Harrisburg for business, for some new business meeting and then um, the probation parole act, I'm working with some legislators on that, so I'm gonna be in Harrisburg in the morning. Then I'll be back in the afternoon, and then Friday I'm going down to the family association there, uh, with Sarah Hobbie Sanders. So that'll be enjoyable for me and we'll, uh, we'll be back out on Monday, so I'll be out this afternoon and pretty much all day tomorrow and then Friday I'm free as well.
Okay, but should we back on Wednesday?
Yeah, I'll be back on, I'll be back Tuesday, tomorrow afternoon, the, I'll be here on Sunday, I'll be here Thursday, and I'll be here Friday night. Anything for you?
Um, one of the things that's fine for us today is to get you a proposal on the grant writing that, um, because I wanna get that moving. Like, I wish it, but, um, but anyway, uh, I think what I'll do is I'll send that to you and then maybe we'll add it to the work session we have the next week.
Do you have the resolution that, that I can put in?
The EMS castle?
Uh, yes.
Or EMS, or.
Task force, so I can put it up around, I can get it in fact.
Yes, I do have that. Hey, my only hope is that I have not actually asked all the people that I want on for the initial committee, so at this rate, maybe. Well, I can drive for a few hours, I'll just make some calls.
Yeah, and even just, yeah, give me a few names and I'm on second.
Yeah, we, usually what I have done is go in like a kind of full, yeah, so. Some of them are obvious and horses and etc., they don't, they can't guess, yeah.
You're very late, I just wanted to let you know that next week my office is closed, Tuesday through Friday, we have our annual recertification training.
Seems like that happens more annually.
We go twice a year.
Wait, what does that mean? It's like, we're gonna go through the minutes and it's like every two months.
We have a conference in June and we have our recertification in October.
Ah, my recertification, it's in May. Wait, what?
Oh, so you're warming up your power.
Well, really, I'm a smooth driver.